Step forward and introduce yourself and your church. We'd appreciate it, then after you do a little introduction, leave us in the vocation. We appreciate it.
I will. Thank you.
Well, go ahead. Sorry.
Am I pronounced it the right way?
Make it seated till right.
Okay.
Finish his introductory comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor White. My name is Brian Haybig, and I serve as the pastor of Downtown Presbyterian Church. We're at the corner of Washington and Broad, and been here since 2005. So thank you for letting me pray for you. Let me pray for us. By the way, before I pray, let me say this. I know I might not say something the way you would say it, or I may not believe exactly what you believe, but I want to try to pray in a way that I'm asking for the things that we would all want. So let me pray for us. Heavenly Father, you are very generous, and you are very good, and we would thank you for your generosity and your goodness to our city. Thank you even for the beautiful day that we've been surrounded by today. And Father, thank you for every person who is in this room and for our city's leadership. And we pray for them, and I pray for them, that whatever is needed tonight that you would grant it, oh Lord, we thank you that our city is growing and that it's thriving and is not diminishing. But we know that comes with challenges, and so our leadership needs wisdom and discernment. And so we pray that in whatever way that is needed tonight, that you would grant it to our leaders, that if they are tired or weary or discouraged, that you would renew them and lift them up. And we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
And your church is a new addition to downtown.
Yes, we started in 2004 and plan to be here as long as we can.
Appreciate the great job y'all did on that quarter.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which stands one nation under God in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Brian. Call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lily Ann Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Staub.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of January 23rd. It'll stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections, seeing none. We have a number of folks who signed up to speak to us, and also we have a number of special presentations tonight. Alan Estridge, you're up front. We got your report. You get a couple of minutes. Tell us some.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me speak to you all tonight. I just wanted to share some great news about the year that the Metropolitan Arts Council had in 2022.
Speaking to the microphone, Alan.
For the first time, our income passed $2,900,000. We were operating the block by over 315,000. Funding we received from the city of Greenville through ATAX was at an all-time high, and I want to thank everyone for that because it really means a lot to the arts and cultural community of Greenville. Our assets are now at 3.445 million. Grants were at an all-time high that we were able to support this year, over $510,000. Greenville Open Studios sales crossed the half a million dollar mark in 2022, totaling We had 2,144 donors, and the prospects in our database have grown from 4,617 in 2006 to 48,789 in 2022. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for all your support and being so behind the many cultural initiatives that make this city great. I'd also like to thank council and city manager John McDonough for making an absolute stellar hire in the special events department with Tara Aker. She's also a board member, and she's just an absolute delight to work with. So the team of Tara and Beth Brotherton is outstanding, and I just wanted to say thank you.
We think they're pretty stellar, too.
Absolutely.
You about to run out of room in your building? You still going to stay there for the time being, or are you looking?
Well, our lease comes up in June 30th, and so I'm nagging the ever-living you-know-what out of the landlord, because we really do want to stay there.
Yeah, I want to stay in that area for sure.
Because it's a great area, and you know, we've been there 20 years.
Wow.
So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Lorraine, you got your whole crew with you tonight. We appreciate that. Maybe you could introduce everybody, too.
Bring the bus when you come, right? Well, yes, absolutely. Lorraine Crowell, United Housing Connections, partnering with the city to do some outreach and some different programs for folks experiencing homelessness. And tonight, I brought our outreach team and our case manager and some folks, some you may know, some you may not know. I'll start with Thomas on the end. Thomas is a veteran and also works on street outreach. Thank you, Thomas. Chris, most of you probably know Chris already. He's been with us in this program, a lead support specialist.
Stand up, Chris.
Folks experiencing homelessness. He's shy. Chris is very shy. And then next to him is Robin. She is our COO and responsible for basically putting our programs together and helping us get those off the ground. And next to Robin is Krista. She is our case manager for outreach and for special projects. We thank her. And on the end is Albert. You may not know Albert, but he is out and about at night and during the weekend mostly. So you may not see him during the week, but he's out there beating the pavement.
I'm so glad to say I've seen these folks on the street with clipboards in hand, talking to people one-on-one, which is the only way you can really deal with the homeless issue in Greenville. One-on-one, persistent work, hard work, and I appreciate, and want to say publicly how much we appreciate that work. Just keep it up. We got a lot more to do, but it's great to see them out there every day in the streets of downtown Greenville.
Yeah. So, you know, we have four initiatives. The three that I want to talk about tonight is, one, the Keep Your Change to Be the Change Program. Just this quarter, we've raised over $2,000 in that program. That's that QR code that people scan and they're able to give to agencies. So that doesn't sound like a lot, but it certainly provides bus passes and clothing and food and water and things that our outreach team needs to support folks. And so it's a very important program, so thank you for that. Also, the Homeless Task Force is now 40 members strong, so we meet on Mondays once a month, second Monday, 8:30, it's a Zoom call, so we all meet to just talk about issues people are facing, provide some advocacy and education. And then lastly, of course, our outreach. I wanted to share just a few things. To date, the team's connected two people. This is from, we've been working at the Lila Mae statue near the Rescue Mission. So since the 3rd, I just wanted to share with you all just some things that we've experienced there, so you'll know. To date, the team's connected two people to substance abuse treatment, two people to the United Ministry's Bus Ticket Home Program, one gentleman in dire need of wound care to medical treatment, two people who've been connected to Sober Living of America, which is a transitional housing program with treatment. And then the team's also placed four veterans into temporary housing as they work to connect them to VA permanent housing. So recently, the team also placed two mothers with children in temporary housing, helping them to connect with employment. As we work to support people in crisis, their tragic stories are as diverse as the people themselves. We come across people who have been professionals in their former lives, who are escaping domestic violence, who have suffered with severe mental illness or addiction, or simply they're just elderly and can't afford a place to live. Just two weeks ago, the team was able to connect one elderly couple to, out of homelessness to an apartment, a brand-new apartment actually, in Malden. They've been homeless for nearly a dozen years. So, but I think the one recent story that sticks, and I hope I can share this because the mayor took up some of my time. So recently, there was a 72-year-old gentleman who was a veteran at Lila Mae, and during the second week of January, he was released from the hospital with acute heart failure. He had CPD, all kinds of things, couldn't walk, sitting under the statue. And our team went, said, hey, friend, can we help you? And they said, yes. He said, yes, I'm sick, I can't walk. They released me from the hospital. So the team takes him to the VA, they get him a walker so that he can walk stably and get him connected to VA for housing. But the remarkable thing is that we were able to get him also into a boarding house because VA couldn't take him immediately. He did pass in that boarding house, but friends, he passed in a warm bed with people around him, at peace, and wouldn't that be what Lila Mae would want? Isn't that what she did her whole life, was create an opportunity for helping people? So thank you for what you do. Thank you for supporting this program. We couldn't do half of what we do without you, and so we wanted you to know how grateful we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. Lorraine tells me that she's working on some new initiatives that will be of great interest to us in helping deal with the situation in downtown Greenville. Thank you. We're still under a three-minute thing here. Susan Crooks, you walked in a minute ago, so you get your comment period.
Today, I voice my appreciation to you, the Greenville City Council, for the actionable steps you take to support your community members. I am empowered and confident to ask, what are the next steps we need to entice the city of Greenville to join our dance as the first municipality to be a Walts Waltz stigma-free environment? As some may recall, I addressed the board or council on August 22nd of 2022, the date marked the third year without my son. I understand the complicated nature of getting things done, priorities, agendas, and goodness your endless to-do list. I get it. But I stand here as a mom who has seen her son suffer for almost 20 years with treatment-resistant anxiety. Hearing my son die by suicide, the faculty, administrators are shocked. So many suffer in silence as we dance around this topic. We need to, we must normalize these conversations, and we must do better. Our goal, Walts Waltz, is a goal to reduce suffering and save lives. A step is to end the stigma, and we create what we call now stigma-free environments because we felt the zones weren't as... What a better place in the city of Greenville, known for your forward-thinking and progressive actions, to join us. According to the CDC, 2021 stigmatized individuals experienced isolation, depression, and anxiety. Stopping stigma is important to make all communities a safer place. Prisma Health named mental health as its number-one priority in 2022 Community Health Needs Assessment. Saying mental health/depression care is ranked as the most important for staying healthy. We know the health and well-being of your citizens is at the top of your list and a priority. We totally understand this. Mental health is complicated, but I want you to rest assured, the process of becoming a Walts Waltz stigma-free environment is not. In fact, the thing you must think about is it makes a bold statement to your employees, your citizens, and your visitors, that this is a safe and benevolent place, that they can be themselves and feel supported. The reach of our stigma-free environments is exponential. It's also a deliberate decision to empower the community to have access to more equitable and compassionate environment. This actually changes how we perceive mental health and how we respond to a clear relationship between mental and physical being the same. You make that bold statement that we view them the same. Business in the United States loses $219 billion annually related to lack of mental health support in the workplace. Employees expect workplace assistance for mental health. Absenteeism, 11 days lost when we don't address mental health. Presentism, 57 days of reduced productivity. And not to mention, non-action causes human suffering, so I'm grateful to be here again, and I hope to actually speak with you about the next steps, and thank you very much for your time.
City manager, would somebody connect with her? Because this is the second time she had wanted to share her ideas with us.
Mr. Mayor, we have been working on this, and I think we have something that we can bring forward in the next...
Okay. I thought it...
...period of time for your consideration and the rest of council.
But I didn't see any follow-through.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We're able to work. We work with each, you're our first municipality, so each company, business, or nonprofit, whomever, is different and unique in what their needs are, and so we always make them more individualized with just certain standards that we make everyone uphold. So if you have any questions, and I have information like taking mental health temperature and things like that, that I think will really support you, thank you.
I think we're really close. We just need to get across the finish line.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a couple of people who signed up to speak about item 16B, so I'll take them right now if you don't mind. I'll see them out there. Bill Holt. You got Bill first, and then Jody's right after him, and Taylor, if y'all just come right, you know, come right in a row after that. Thank you.
My name is Bill Holt. I live at 105 Rockingham Road in the city. I have connections to the Climate Reality Project, Mayor White, council members. I've lived here for 45 years, and it's a wonderful place to live, and I can't thank you enough for what you have done. I would love to see this place in 2073 even better than what we have in 2023. As you can tell, I'm not likely to be around to see that, but I have hopes. To ensure this, I would like to see Greenville work selectively to attract talent and investors and businessmen, businesses, that do their planning with attention to both their own futures and to the futures of the future city where they're going to locate. Such talent, investors and businesses, in my opinion, will have cultures that value sustainability, including the desire for energy efficiency in everything they do and availability of clean energy. If we're going to attract this caliber of talent and investment and businesses, I think we have to demonstrate to them that we are committed to sustainability, including energy efficiency and availability of clean energy. The Sustainability Plan that you all are going to vote on later this evening is a broad and thoughtful document. It recognizes the importance of equity and inclusion in the planning process. It refers to creating a detailed climate action plan. I hope that the council can approve it unanimously. And going forward, I hope council will continue its support for sustainability and for the Climate Action Plan, which is a recommendation of the Sustainability Plan. I hope you will commit to frequent updates to both plans because in these areas in particular, the future is closing in on the planet rather quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we have, you have two members of the GRAC Commission. Thank you.
Hi, guys. I think I know most of you. My name is Jody Price Highsea. I'm the chair of the Green Ribbon Advisory Committee. I've been on the GRAC or on a ad hoc of the GRAC since it started almost 13 years ago, and this plan is something we've been really looking forward to for almost 12 years. We worked really closely with the Shai Center, West Strips and Laura Bane. They helped, they put in countless hours putting this plan together. We looked, we read a lot of different sustainability plans from cities about the same size as Greenville. We looked at Chattanooga, we looked at Knoxville, you know, in the same region, so we weren't pulling from the West Coast, you know, totally different kind of climate in many ways. And so we tried to make it something really simple. There's not probably as many metrics as we would have liked in it to hold city accountable for certain goals, but, you know, the city staff went through the plan after the Shai Center and the Green Ribbon put it together and made it more, you know, maybe a bit more achievable initially. We hope in the future we can add more metrics to it, measurable goals that we can, you know, reduce waste reduction or, you know, specific things. But it's a really manageable plan. It isn't super hard for the city to commit to, whether that's economically or staff-wise, to try to reach some really lofty goals initially, but it does address all the things that, you know, citizens have been, you know, concerned about and Green Ribbon Advisory Committee members have been concerned about without making it too just strenuous for the city initially. And I just want to thank city staff for their review of it because I know it was a big plan and it took a lot of time. It's really, if you guys haven't, I mean, hopefully you've all looked at it. It's a, I think we came up with a really great plan for the city of Greenville. There aren't really any other cities our size that don't already have a sustainability plan, so we're kind of behind on this issue. And I just, you know, really encourage you guys to pass this plan so that we can move Greenville to where it really should be. And then, you know, as this plan, as we, as time goes, we can, this plan will evolve. It should be a working document with more measurables going forward, but I think it is a very reasonable plan and takes Greenville to the next step. And I just want to thank you for having sustainability staff members now, which is a really great thing because I've represented Greenville in several cities as a non-staff member, and the people were surprised that a city like the size of Greenville had a bunch of volunteers from a Green Ribbon Advisory Committee versus staff members. So thank you for committing resources to sustainability staff for the city, and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say Jody and her husband Steve live a few houses away from me, and I can tell you, Jody makes things happen. So very, very glad that you're in this role, Jody. Thanks for all your work.
Taylor Spear, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Council. Taylor Spear, I'm a resident of Greenville. I'm a member of the Green Ribbon Advisory Committee, and I'm an energy lawyer with the law firm Fox Rothschild. I want to thank you all very much for your commitment to sustainability in the city of Greenville. It's personally, it's very important to me personally, and I think that it is a key driver of economic growth, and it's something that I believe you will continue to see growth from in the event that you approve the plan. I support the plan. I'm here to tell you that. I also want to be here, however, to highlight where I think that it could be better. The plan is not prescriptive. In other words, it does not provide measurable goals that the city can look at and say, we want to have this measurable goal achieved by this time. A lot of these documents are iterative processes, so I don't lodge this as a complaint. I lodge it to highlight for you that you may be hearing from GRAC again, hopefully in a couple of years, with something that is more prescriptive, something that's more specific. You'll also likely be hearing from GRAC soon about the part of it that is part and parcel to my occupation, which is the Climate Action Plan. So thank you very much for the city's commitment to sustainability. Thank you for your commitment to GRAC. I will also note that the city provided us resources and gave us access to Furman University. They did a wonderful job to help prepare this document. I hope that you will approve it, and I hope that you will continue to look for new plans, new ideas from GRAC in the future. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say something on the heels of the last speaker on that, I want to thank all of y'all for your patience on this. We did have a good presentation for Michael Frickson in August. We have been hard at work on getting our development code moving forward and across the finish line, at least to a draft. That's not to say this wasn't important. It's extremely important, and I thank staff for bringing it to my attention to bring forward to council. I will add, there are three Climate Reality Project graduates sitting on the dais, Council Member Fleming, Council Member Staub, and Council Member Dow, myself. So we value it, and I know my other fellow council members do as well. It is not perfect. It does not have metrics, as you outlined, Taylor, you know, to the detail, but it is a first step, and I like to put this in the category of living document. I think this is a very data-driven council, very data-driven council, and metrics help us do our job better. So I really appreciate those closing remarks on that. I do think GRAC has a great opportunity for, restructuring is too strong a word, but having a focus on sustainability as it pertains to this, and we would not be here with many people, but particularly the people that spoke tonight, as well as Michael Frickson. And we will hear the presentation tonight on this to introduce our new staff member that is tied to this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That'll be item 16B on the agenda. We have a very important presentation. Chief Howie Thompson.
Appreciate you guys coming here tonight.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor in Castle, good to be with you tonight.
Did we do something wrong?
I know. You know, I was thinking that while I was sitting back there, I got all the officers lined up.
The work is sweating. I don't know what, I don't know what he's...
Most of the time, you see all these officers in one place, and you think something's wrong, but tonight it's actually right. Everything is good, and we have a good...
Good way to put it. Thank you.
We're here tonight to share some exciting news about the reduction in violent crimes in the city last year. As you all know, the reduction of violent crimes is important to everyone in the city. It is a focus of the police department, and it goes hand-in-hand with our Project Safe Neighborhoods initiative. With your support and that of the city manager, our senior leadership team, and all of the employees of the city, our law enforcement partners, and our community, the Greenville Police Department had a very successful 2022. The support and investments you have made in the Greenville Police Department have helped us maintain a nearly full staffing over the past few years, when we've seen other agencies across the nation struggling to keep police officers and to get police officers to apply. And this has been essential in providing excellent customer service and crime reduction. In 2022, the city of Greenville had a 17.5% reduction in violent crimes. We had 73 fewer violent crimes last year and saw a reduction in every category of violent crimes, including murder, which was reduced from 7 in 2021 to 4 in 2022. Now, these numbers that we are talking about, these are straight what we report to the FBI UCR, the Uniform Crime Reporting System. And so this is what everyone compares across the land to look at their violent crimes. Every person in the Greenville Police Department played an essential role in the success, from our 911 communicators who dispatch our officers, to our strategic planning and analysis, which provides intelligence and data to guide resource deployment, to every division of the police department, which is represented here. I'd like to recognize a few of them now. Our command staff captains, Patricia Molenax, Chi Blair, Ed Iric, Jeff Long, and Michael Yearout, who helped me lead the department and the five different divisions we have. Our neighborhood engagement team, representing them is Sergeant Jessica McLaughlin, Officer Noel Howard, Justin Lewis, and Nathan Wilkie. As you know, this team was developed last year in 2022 to work hand-in-hand with our neighborhoods to prevent crimes and promote safety, and we're already seeing really good results. We're breaking them down by the neighborhoods they work right now, working on doing a year-end report for them. But one report is done that I was looking at, and it was for the Shemwood Crossing area, and that's Officer Justin Lewis, and it has seen a really tremendous drop in violent crimes, and that's excellent. So he's doing an excellent job. They all are, but that one I've seen, and I know I've seen a great reduction of crime there. Our crime response team, represented today by Sergeant Tommy Westhoff, Officers Kurt Sitman, Ryan Miller, Angoberto Franco. This team had a huge impact in violent crimes, and this is why. Last year, the police department seized 308 weapons, handguns, rifles, unlawful weapons. This team, the CRT, them, they're just part of the team. They seized 130 of them. So 42% of those weapons seized were by this team. It was excellent work. Why is that important? Those are over 300 guns that aren't in our city right now being used to commit violent crimes. And so that in itself, getting these guns off the street, shows a good effort to reduce violent crimes. I'd also like to share that our efforts have continued in 2023. Just got the report back from January, and we are down 44% in January. In 2022, we saw 32 violent crimes, and this year we saw 18. So that's a reduction in January of violent crimes of about 42%. The strong relationship and teamwork between the local, state, and federal agencies are unprecedented in our area. I would like to thank all the agencies that have worked with us to help us make Greenville a safer place, including our sheriff, Hobart Lewis, and the Greenville County Sheriff's Office. We couldn't have done it without them. They've been with us every step of the way and really supported us and supported our, many of our crime reduction efforts. One of their teams is their DPU, their directed patrol unit. They work hand-in-hand with our crime response team and get on these areas, which I know we get a lot of complaints from, that are right on the lines of where the city and the county meet, and the criminals know that. So we've been really working, working hard in those areas, and those two teams work together on that. The solicitor's office, SLED. The solicitor's office, SLED, all of our federal task force partners, which include DEA, FBI, Secret Service, Homeland Security, and the United States Marshal Service. These accomplishments could not have been possible without the employees of the Greenville Police Department, who are the most dedicated, caring, compassionate, and professional I have seen during my career here at the Greenville Police Department. And I am proud of each of them and their accomplishments. They also would not have been possible without your support. So on behalf of the Greenville Police Department, I want to thank each of you for your ongoing support of law enforcement here in the city of Greenville. Thank you.
We thank you, Chief, and all the officers here tonight. Thank you. You're a very special guest tonight, but thank you for bringing that message, and our support for you is, speaks for itself. But we do think about you and pray for you every day, and we appreciate everything you do. The fact is, during the same five-year period where our crime has gone down consistently, our city population has increased from 58,000 to 75,000 or so. So during a time of an actual population increase in the city of Greenville, our crime has gone down. And needless to say, you read it in the paper every day about major metro centers in America where they fill ever since 2020. They seem to be gripped by an increase, a surge in crime of all kinds. And our sister cities in South Carolina and North Carolina are seeing the same thing. They're actually seeing an increase in crime in many categories, and yet in the city of Greenville, it's going exactly the opposite direction. So we appreciate you coming and bringing this message to everyone tonight because it's significant. Everyone needs to understand it, and I think you guys go with the support for the police department and your professionalism, and frankly, the emphasis on neighborhoods. Neighborhood policing and what we're doing in our neighborhoods across the board has all made a difference in crime going down in the city of Greenville. So thank you very much for making this presentation tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next is a good update on the cultural corridor. The walking connection between the Main Street and the Heritage Green sites.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Has it been done?
Not quite.
Oh, man.
We're close. We're close.
Many years. Okay.
It has, it's taken a little while. We're gonna, we're gonna give you a good update. Now, that's a tough act to follow there, so we'll do our best. Pleasure to be here tonight, give you a little update on the cultural corridor. I'm gonna make a few introductory remarks, and then I'm gonna ask Nick DePalma, he's the project manager for the project. He's gonna kind of give you an update on status, kind of what we've been doing along the way as far as public involvement, just stakeholder involvement, that sort of thing, and kind of where we are. We're getting ready to start seeing some construction turning loose on this project. So very excited to be at this point. This is our cultural corridor project. It's basically, we're looking at three blocks of College Avenue, which makes up this, this streetscape enhancement. This is a great kind of overview of the project corridor, with Main Street being there on the bottom of the screen, and the termination point there at Heritage Green to the top of the page there. Want to recommend Barrett Armstrong and Edward Kenny for their assistance in putting these renderings together. They did a fantastic job to really take boring engineering drawings and kind of bring them to life a little bit and just give you a better visual what this is gonna look like. But really, really nice project. This project has been in the works for a while now, and we appreciate y'all's patience as we've, as we've worked through this. We're in the very final 95% engineering design phase. We're already starting to bid a few, few of the academy bypass projects out that we'll talk about, that are somewhat precursor-type projects to, to help with the traffic management. But yeah, this is a streetscape project from Main Street to Heritage Green. Basically, what we're ultimately looking for is to make, to extend that pedestrian experience that you, that you have on Main Street. We're trying to extend that over to our cultural resources over at Heritage Green, the museum, and the libraries. Some of the project goals, obviously, we see these projects very similar to projects we've done in the West End and other locations on Main Street. They're economic development-driven generating type projects. So economic growth along this corridor was certainly one of the project goals. Part of making this a more pedestrian, kind of friendly corridor means we want to try to slow cars down, so, slow the traffic down on the, on the street. But also, we're trying to implement what we're calling the Academy Street Bypass and really get Academy Street functioning more like a traffic bypass for those, for those vehicles that are just trying to get through to downtown from one side to the other. So this is, this project is going to implement some of the, some initial projects of the Academy Street Bypass. Enhancing pedestrian mobility and safety between Main Street and Heritage Green was really one of the key priorities. And this project was recommended, was recommended in both our downtown strategic master plan as well as our downtown transportation master plan. Both of those, that wrapped up in 2019. They saw this as a very key component of the next step of our growth in our downtown. This map here gives a project overview. The cultural corridor project there is shown, kind of highlighted in neon green there. You can see it extends from Main Street over to Heritage Green. The Academy Street is highlighted in the, with the pink line. That's the area of Academy Street that we're focusing on, where we got a number of different small intersection projects that we're gonna be working on along that section of Academy to get traffic flowing a little better on Academy Street and to get the cars that are trying to extend just through downtown to use that as their preferred route. With that, I'm gonna let Nick kind of take it over from here, and he's gonna give you an update on just the status and kind of what we've been doing over the last year.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank y'all for the opportunity to talk on this project. So I actually volunteered for this one, so I don't know what that says about me, but it's near and dear to my heart. So.
That's a good one.
One thing that we wanted to make clear here is, if you look at the pictures up on the screen right now, it's not the most inviting corridor right now. If you're on Main Street, you want to walk down to Heritage Green, you got some narrow sidewalks right up against the road, a lot of traffic, a lot of fast-moving traffic. They're not trying to come downtown. They're trying to speed as fast as they can through downtown and get through. So one of the main things about this project that I'm fairly proud of is that we're gonna be able to slow down that traffic and put the focus back on pedestrians in the area. And I think that's a really good goal for us to go towards. With that, I'll show you a few more renderings of what it will look like. We'll try to extend that tree canopy. Like Clint said, extend the feel of Main Street as you're walking down the cultural corridor. You'll have a nice curb lawn gap space between sidewalk and roadway, 10-foot sidewalks on each side. It'll be nice, perfectly walkable, lots of shade. And then here's another view. This is Heritage Green on your left and Canvas, obviously, on your right. So this section is another one where reducing the number of travel lanes, narrowing them up, slowing down speeds, and also providing more space for people to walk. And the other piece of this project that's tied to cultural corridor is the Academy Bypass. So one thing, when we started this project, that we were looking at is, if you're gonna remove lanes from College, where's traffic gonna go? So somewhat luckily, Academy Street is actually under capacity right now, as it operates today. So the goal pretty quickly was, all right, so if people are coming from out of town and their destination is not downtown itself, their destination is somewhere else, let's see if we can encourage them to use Academy Street. So the goal of the Academy Bypass portion is to have commuter traffic or traffic that's trying to get around downtown to use Academy Street as opposed to driving directly through the center of downtown. So there are three key areas that we're looking at when we talk about the downtown bypass. The first is that first intersection that you come to, right up there at East, North, and Academy. And I'll show you more about each one of these locations in a minute. But East, North, and Academy, how do we get people turning right onto Academy? And then you immediately come up on Church and Academy. That's your first signal where you typically will sit for a little, little longer than you should. And then at the, towards the end of this piece of the corridor, you have the intersection at Elford, where that signal's not necessarily warranted. It's very close to the signal at College, so it actually doesn't meet standards as far as signal spacing. So looking at what can we do with those three key locations was really important to making Academy Street function better in place of College Street. So I'll just go through these pretty quickly. One key piece of the Church Street intersection is actually to extend a left-turn storage lane. So that extension keeps cars from backing up into the through lanes, which right now can be pretty frustrating if you're trying to go through, and there's just so many cars trying to turn left, and you can't, you can't go. There's a green light, but you can't get there. So this will actually correct that, and this is under construction right now. So one piece of the, we're trying to get as much of the Academy Bypass done as we can before cultural corridor starts, simply to provide that avenues, particularly when construction starts of somewhere the traffic can go, feasibly go, to bypass some of the traffic concerns that will be caused by the construction project. The Elford intersection, we are actually removing that signal, extending the median and turning Elford into ride-in, ride-out, and road dieting Elford. So that will allow us to add some parking, some unloading space for Bon Secours, and some other opportunities for bikes on Elford Street. Right now, Elford is very under capacity, plenty of room on the street. DOT thinks it's a great idea to do this, and it removes that extra signal from Academy. So if you're, again, trying to get in or out of town, one less signal to have to go through and stop at just helps you, entice you a little bit more to use Academy and stay on Academy instead of turning down Buncomore College. This is our plan at the arena. So.
These are, this is a much nicer drawing than what Barrett, by Barrett and Edward.
I know.
I love what you did with it.
It is a boring engineering drawing, but it is, it shows everything that we need to, where we're, we are adding an additional right-turn lane to turn on to Academy. So that will help get cars off of East, North, and onto Academy. It'll help encourage that. We're improving the pedestrian crossing there, right there at the center. We're putting in the high-vis crosswalks. We're adding a refuge on the left side on the screen, if you're looking at it. And we are removing that left-turn lane to allow room for a planted median with a fence. And that was something that's been a safety concern for many years. People cross the street just haphazardly through that section. So being able to add that planted median with that fence is gonna cut down on that and improve safety drastically in this area. So it's, it's also one of the plans, if, if any of you are at the Placerbia, this kind of meets the goals of that master plan as well. So we're trying to kind of incorporate as much as we can of that and get everything done kind of all at once to improve safety and improve traffic flow onto Academy.
Is that a, is that a median in the middle of the street?
Yes. Yes, so that'll be a planted median with some trees, shrubs, and.
Let's take a look at the Placerbia plan at the same time, because we take bites of that. And I wonder, I just have to look at that and wonder, well, can we put trees in those, in that, in that period, in that space?
And that is the plan. Yes, sir. So as far as some of the coordination that we've had to do, as Clint alluded to a little bit earlier, we've had heavy public involvement. Business owners, Bon Secours, had three meetings. One, we co-hosted with SC DOT, which was great. They've been really good partners for this project. So one of the things that became very clear when we started this project was, especially in our early meetings with SC DOT, is yes, we could have quickly gone and removed and replaced the sidewalk as it was and had new sidewalk, but it wouldn't have accomplished any of the goals of the project. It wouldn't have changed the complexion of the area, it wouldn't have helped flow, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have brought that feel, that downtown feel towards cultural corridor. So we did spend extra time on coordination to get some design exceptions with DOT to be able to remove that additional lane, which is what bought us the space to be able to put in the curb lawn, the canopy trees. It allowed us to put a plaza up there at the corner of Main and College. So it gave us a lot more room to be able to do some interesting things with this project. It's given us time to, we're doing a wayfinding type design where there will be a path in the, in the sidewalk and in the crosswalks that kind of highlights the route you should use to get to Heritage Green. So there's some, some interesting things we're doing to make this project unique that we're pretty excited about. We're able to rebuild the signals and do internally illuminated signs instead of just leaving the old Duke signals that you can't add anything to in place. And we've coordinated with the Canvas Site Development. So we're anticipating a future development agreement to kind of work on the timing of construction on that last block. But it has been crucial to work with them the last few months to make sure that our project is in line with theirs and that both projects can get past DOT. So we've, we've had a lot of coordination with DOT, making sure that their project and our project are in sync with each other, and that's been extremely beneficial. The Greek Festival's also been another one, obviously, the changes at Elford. They've been really good partners. And, and talking with Bon Secours, we've timed construction so that we're not going to be causing major disruptions during the March Madness events or the SCC tournament. So we've, we've timed all the construction around that so that we're not causing any problems with, with anything going on there. So the construction that we're in right now will end within the next few weeks before any of that starts. And then we'll wait until after the events to start any more construction. So this is just a highlight of our budget and our tentative schedule. So as I mentioned, we're actually already doing some traffic signal upgrades for communication, which will, when we have our TMZ, we'll be able to improve the signal timings, we'll be able to monitor everything. And we're working on Church and Academy right now. Phase three and four, which are East, North, and Elford, we'll be working on immediately after March Madness, and cultural corridor will probably be right around the same timeframe. So I plan to try to advertise in March or April of this year so that we can hit the ground running right after March Madness. So that's all I had. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions, Congress, or Council? Ms. Fleming?
Yeah, I have a question. When you mentioned signs, you said you wanted to improve the signalization and some signage. Are we, are we gonna add, you said something about finding directions? So are we adding more signs to the area?
There will be some wayfinding. So we're still hashing out some of the details of the wayfinding.
But we're not, not cluttering it up with, with signs, are we?
What we're trying to do is something.
Because that's a problem as well.
What we're trying to do is something, a visual cue in the sidewalk itself. So it will not necessarily be signs. We're trying to do something unique, and we're still hashing out the fine details of it, but we're getting there.
Clever.
Yeah, see, I was gonna say, congratulations on getting this going. I think it's a, it's gonna be tremendous to get, to continue getting off the linear Main Street and start getting people. And boy, aren't you right when you said that these type of investments revitalize economic growth, right? I mean, it really does. I think it just pays for itself, and then over a number of years, and then it's just gravy. So we've seen that in other, other areas as well. And, you know, and for example, I know we've been working on Wade Hampton Boulevard for the last few years, so looking forward to getting that done as well and, and moving that forward. But it really is interesting how, when you invest in your corridors, wherever they may be, you get higher quality businesses, you get a higher tax revenue, and you just got a better quality of life, too. So appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
Brian, I have a couple of, and this might be a Clint question. Can you go back to the slide that shows College Street, the existing? Excuse me. It's one of the first ones you had. Are we, there you go, right there. We're resurfacing. We're resurfacing College, are we not, as part of this?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good. A picture tells a thousand words. Okay. The road diet on Elford. So I went down there within the last couple of weeks, and that's where the well stages, performance, buses, trailers, whatever. How does a road diet, I'm, I'm just assuming we've had all those conversations with the well and performances coming, that they, are they still going to use Elford for staging?
We're not changing that, are we? We're not changing.
We're not changing that, we have coordinated with them.
It's about to rechurch.
So the.
So we're not changing the section between church and?
Right now, it's a four-lane section, so that outside lane will be dedicated parking.
Okay, and that's where the well will be able to put there, just where they've always been doing?
Correct.
Okay, all right, good. That's up. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry.
How are you guys striking the balance between the increased traffic on Academy and making it safer and easier for pedestrians to cross Academy to get to Heritage Green and all this of there?
So right now, we're working on trying to retime the signals. So one, one item that we can do when we time the signals is if you're going the speed limit or close to it, you hit greens. Sorry. So if you're, if you're, if you time the signals properly, you can time it to where the speed limit is essentially meters traffic, meters speeds, right? So if you're going, the speed limit, if you're going 35, you'll hit green lights. If you go too fast or too slow, you'll actually end up hitting red lights. So it kind of trains the driver to drive a little bit slower. The other piece that we're looking at is LPIs, which are leading pedestrian intervals. So it allows, basically it allows an all-red situation for the signal for cars and allows the pedestrian a few extra seconds to establish themselves in that crosswalk while cars are stopped before any cars are allowed to go. That way, any of those quick turning movements or anything that can be problems for pedestrians as they're entering the crosswalk are kind of eliminated and, and done away with. So we're looking at LPIs along the corridor just to see, maybe that's something that we can implement. We're, we're hopeful that we can implement it along the corridor. That way, it's a little bit safer for pedestrians and making sure that we have got it.
I think we sort of touched, I think that's going to be the trickiest part of this whole thing. I mean, because you got two sort of goals that, that really.
I don't know.
You know, absolutely contradict each other, but they certainly aren't, you know, supportive of each other. So, so it's going to be real, it's going to be real interesting how you guys figure that out to, to give, you know, make it safe and, and give pedestrians enough time to get across without creating such a timeframe that disincentivizes motor cars, motorists, from using that as a bypass.
Right. And another piece too that I'll point out is at the intersection of College and Academy, we're changing the turn lanes there. So there's actually a, there's, there's dual lefts right now, and it conflicts with the exact movement for pedestrians crossing the street. So we're actually changing that around so that those don't conflict anymore. So that left turn won't conflict with the pedestrian anymore. And we're encouraging people to walk on the other side of the street, where we're giving them a refuge island as well. So we're, we're adding refuge island, we're taking away that conflict point, and we're trying to, trying to help that crossing as well, because the crossing across Academy is, is one of the hardest ones to accommodate.
Yeah. And, and to that, also on the Canvas site, the BB&amp;T side corner, when you cross College, you will only be crossing two lanes, two through lanes of traffic now, as opposed to four. So we are shortening that crosswalk up tremendously.
Okay, so you're creating a sort of road diet in that.
Still, still, yeah. Yeah, I think the, the design's going to, the design's going to make it far more pedestrian-friendly for the, crossing any of those directions over there than what it is now. Now it's horrible. Thank you very much, thank you.
That is helpful.
We're roasting up here.
Has part of that, this might tie in. I have in the back of my mind that one point we were working with Duke Energy and retaking an SC DOT, because I'm taking over the signals along Academy. Am I imagining that? Hadn't that been a biggest part of our challenge long ago?
That's a major challenge on Academy Street, and this project is going to address two of those, two of those signal locations.
This project lets us take, take over two of them?
Two of those.
Okay, and we're working towards more?
Working towards more. Got, got a lot more to do, but we're getting started on it.
Okay, that allows us preemptive control, I guess, on timing them?
It just gives us control over the signal. The communications that we are installing right now with our traffic group, we're, we're going to have all of these signals between East North Street and College communicating with one another. So just having to be unable to sync the signals, have them coordinated, is going to be a huge influence on getting Academy Street flowing better. Appreciate y'all's patience. We're, we're, we're moving forward towards construction, getting closer and closer, but it's going to be exciting projects.
Okay, thank you. All right, fantastic. We're excited about this one. Design Review Board, Urban, let's see, Councilmember Dial, you've got an appreciation to give.
Yes.
Camilla's here.
Camilla, shall I go? I don't, I don't see Carmella Choffey. On behalf of Council, we want to recognize the service of Carmella Choffey. Carmella served since August of 2015 through January 2023 and now has to resign. She's almost eight years shared it, and has just been invaluable to the DRB Urban. So we thank her for her service in.
Councilmember Stahl?
Yes, I would like to recommend Edward Ziegler to complete an unexpired term for the Designer Review Board, Urban, ending April 30th, 2023.
Okay, Mr. Stahl's nominee, Mr. Ziegler, any other nominations, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we hit the consent agenda. Do I have a?
Aso moved.
We have no consent agenda today. We have no consent agenda.
We don't have anything.
We have two second final.
I agree.
Surprise.
I'm fine if you want to vote on it, on consent.
All right, we have item number 14A, an ordinance to enter into a development agreement between the City of Greenville and 660 South Main, QOZBLLC for the design and construction of public improvements at 660 South Main Street.
Second, final motion, second, clerk call the realm.
Do I have a second, I'm sorry?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 14B?
An ordinance to annex approximately 3.14 acres of real property and 0.48 acres of adjacent right-of-way located at 150 Executive Center Drive and to provide the zoning designation of C3.
Second. Second, Shannon wants you, this is a pretty big piece here, three acres.
Yes, sir, thank you. As you know, we continue to work on opportunities for annexation within the city, and this is an economic development opportunity that was presented to the city. And we acted very quickly. We took a new approach by bringing annexation to you all for first reading, then to Planning Commission, and then back to you for second reading. And we'll continue that pathway moving forward for our annexation requests. But this is a great opportunity for us, both economic development-wise and to continue to grow our city limits.
Okay, clerk call the realm.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
15A?
An ordinance to appropriate $197,136 in the Greenville Convention Center Fund and $280,353 in the Hospitality Tax Fund to adjust for the OVG 360 contract for FY 2023.
Motion, please.
Second.
Motion, second.
Can we hear the presentation? Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, the ordinance before you is a budget amendment for the Greenville Convention Center Fund. As you will recall, the FY 23 budget was based on uncertainties surrounding the operator for the facility for the new year. The budget assumed a mid-year adjustment for this fund would be needed once the agreement was in place. Because the OVG contract is quite different from the ASM agreement, the revenues and expenses needed to be reallocated among the new applicable line items. This amendment accounts for the actual revenue and expenses from the July through September timeframe in the old format, as well as the new budget for the remaining nine months of the fiscal year. Further, there was only $600,000 budgeted as a transfer in from the Hospitality Tax Fund to provide additional resources for the Convention Center. In past years, should the operations perform above expectations, our previous OMB directors would back off the actual amount that was sent. It may have been budgeted at a higher level, but then a smaller amount was sent over. And for your information, the average transfer into the Greenville Convention Center over the past six years from Hospitality Tax Funds ranges from a low of $500,000, that was pre-COVID, to a high of $998,000 in FY 21. The total increase for this budget amendment within the Greenville Convention Center Fund itself will be $197,136. This does include an increase in the Hospitality Tax Transfer in of $280,353 in revenue into the fund. This H-tax increase would put us in line with the recent years, and that total would be $880,353. Thank you.
Karen, so on the attachment, on the exhibit, the bulk of the money is professional contractual services, salaries and benefits?
So that is because of the change in how the contract is formatted. It's for the, basically the services that they're providing for us, that operation, operator services that OVG is providing for us. It's just a different way that the contract is set up from our ASM contract.
So is it their employees or our employees?
It would be their employees. Salaries and benefits are a different number. Yes. So you also, you're, you're, you're voting on a budget and, and amendment, which means we had some things that happened from July through September that happened in the old format. Now we have a new format, we've just got to get everything lined back up.
Let me, let me rephrase it. Do we expect in the upcoming budget that our budgeted subsidy for the Convention Center will be in line with what it's been, which is 500 to a million on any given year?
Yes, and this year it's going to be 880,000. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay, clerk call the realm.
Aye.
DeWorke? Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington? Councilmember Stahl? Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15B?
An ordinance to convey surplus of city property located on Meadow Street in the vicinity of Unity Park to the Greenville Housing Fund LLC for the purposes of affordable housing.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, sir. If you all will recall from your meeting in December, you approved a land swap that took two parcels that the city owned at the frontage of Hudson and Meadow for another piece of two parcels that were on Meadow. The importance of that was to allow those two parcels to be added to another conglomeration of parcels that's being developed by the Greenville Housing Fund so that they would have a more developable area in order to bring forth a project. We met with their team last week, and this would allow them to add four to six units on that property, which in affordable housing for the long term is very valuable as we look to try to find ways to solve our affordable housing needs here in Greenville. So we're asking you tonight to transfer these parcels to the Greenville Housing Fund so that they can add it to their property for their project, which we expect that they will go forward with the entitlement request to Planning Commission later this spring, May, if I was anticipating at this point.
Clerk, clerk call the realm.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. Very much. Move forward on that project. 16A, resolution?
A resolution to designate 10,000 from the City Council's Reserve in the State Accommodations Tax Fund for the purpose of providing financial assistance to Varna International Music Academy for Musica, the grand music festival.
And motion, second.
So moved.
Motion, second. You want to hear from Karen?
How did this come to us, outside of our cycle?
It is outside of the cycle. And so when you do your annual budget each year, you set aside a contingency of $50,000. And so the ATAX Committee met on January the 5th to review this application that came out of cycle. So it's.
Ape from ATAX. Recommend it, Jane.
So it's going to be held at First Perez, the Musica event, Requiem for something, something. It's a performance, John?
Of Musica.
Of music?
Okay.
But I'll tell you, I didn't, I didn't understand how you'd even buy tickets at this point, so I'm a little confused on it. But I trust the ATAX Committee has vetted it.
They have, yes, ma'am.
As you should. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
16B?
A resolution to adopt a sustainability plan.
Approved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
I have a comment.
We can still comment.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're going to have a presentation. We're going to meet a new staff member. We, we are really happy that you said.
I want to get that vote tonight.
That makes us all happy.
The vote may go differently after this press.
Briefly.
We'll go briefly. Thank you all, good evening. As you all know, I'm Shannon Laverne, the Assistant City Manager and oversee planning and development for the city. And almost a year ago, we transferred the Sustainability Coordinator and position and function into the Planning Department. And as a result of that, we were able, Michael came back over to planning, and he now serves as our Long Range Planner, Principal Planner over our Long Range Planning Group. And out of that, we were able to create our first Sustainability Planner for the city. And we hired an internal candidate, Ms. Hannah Slice, who is here with us tonight to be introduced to you all and to our community as our first Sustainability Planner for the City of Greenville. And she and Michael will be doing an, an overview of the Sustainability Plan that you heard about from several members of our community, including our GRAC commissioners earlier this evening. This is a really important project for the city, and we know that there's much more work to be done in this arena. But this is our first step to getting on that path forward. And so we really appreciate the support that you all have shown to sustainability in the city and to our department with your support of the resources. I would be remiss tonight to also not thank our Communications Department for creating a beautiful plan, the plan that you are in front of you. All of that, the photo and the design was done by our Communications Department.
With an outstanding, sweet little boy.
A model child.
Why put that up? Doing a little play back there.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael and Hannah to go over a few of the important components of the Sustainability Plan so that we can share with our community the efforts that our city is taking on our sustainability approaches here in the City of Greenville. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes. How do we get to the slides? Cool, thank you. Go forward. These slides are available online. Just long and the short of this first one is that the City of Greenville has, you know, a commitment to sustainability and has been fulfilling this commitment for many, many years, from our, you know, the internal operations of our departments to the Council Priorities Resolution. So this, this plan is not, you know, boom, Greenville's doing sustainability. But we are, we're really focusing our efforts and trying to find a path forward on some of these initiatives and goals that are outlined in the plan. So in 2021 and going into 2022, we did partner with the Shai Institute for Sustainable Communities up at Furman University. And they assisted us with the outreach and the research and the analysis and putting the first draft of the plan together. We did some public outreach activities, some online surveys, had a really fun open house, drop-in style open house at the Roper Mountain Science Center. If anybody has not been out there yet, it's a fantastic facility. And so just make sure you go out there, it's a really neat program that they have. And, you know, we did some follow-up internal work to refine these, these goals and recommendations. And then GRAC voted to recommend the plan at their June meeting last year. So we're, we're glad and happy to bring this forward for Council's consideration. I'll turn it over to Hannah for a few comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Hannah.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, so essentially, Sustainable Greenville focuses on six main focus areas. The first one being the built environment, which is essentially what the Planning Department manages every day. So looking at sustainable development practices and land use techniques in order to push those goals forward. Our second goal is climate energy, which is essentially creating adaptable policies that would address our climate and issue, issues that the city faces. Our third goal is to maintain clean air and water. And then the fourth one would be transportation and mobility,[1779.42] And then the fourth one would be transportation and mobility, which focuses on multimodal transportation systems, as well as improving the current transportation networks that we have. Five, looking at goods and services, which is not only a reduction in waste generation, but also looking at sustainable practices with those procurement policies. And then lastly, through community engagement, which is to make sure that all of our voices are heard and that we have an equitable planning policy moving forward with our sustainability And, and then some key recommendations of Sustainable GBL is just looking at public education through sustainability topics, ranging for focuses on sustainable landscape practices, home energy savings, and then of course, looking at our biking infrastructure and other sustainable alternate forms of transportation. We also are hoping to work with a consultant in the future to develop a detailed climate action plan, and then looking at resources to support businesses that are interested in being more sustainable, which also kind of ties in with our public education components. We've added a dedicated position for sustainability through my position, I guess. And then also looking at interdepartmental working groups that can help us coordinate sustainability projects and our initiatives, and really kind of bringing home these, these ideals, because the Planning Department alone cannot accomplish all of these tasks. And of course, looking at solar panels, electric vehicles, and then incorporating our new sustainability elements into the code, which we have been actively working at with the rewrite. So for some updates with this, of course, I've just, just mentioned that the Sustainability Planning Planner position has been filled. I started in November of 2022. I've been with the city for about a year and a half now. I've been in the Planning Department. I was with the Urban Design Division as a landscape architect. So it's been a really easy transition for me since I knew everyone. We've also started our interdepartmental coordination to discuss a lot of sustainability-related projects, from looking at, you know, solar and LED light replacement with parks and our public works, as well as, you know, talking to our communications team for how we can release some public education components. And then, of course, we have been actively working with the new development code, and we have discussed a variety of sustainable planning and development practices that will be incorporated into that code. And I guess Michael is going to discuss this.
Thank you, Hannah. So just some next steps real briefly. As Shannon mentioned, you know, this is a more of a high-level plan, and our, our next step is to really begin doing more of a deep dive and collecting the data, coming up with proposed metrics on some of these projects, working with GRAC on some of those, those numbers and goals, and then, you know, what, what's feasible, what are some of the costs, and bringing, you know, those forward to council as, as appropriate. Hannah mentioned this, establishing an interdepartmental working group to coordinate on sustainability projects. Like, like she mentioned, planning doesn't, you know, we don't collect recycling, we don't, we don't put irrigation sensors in our, in our parks. So there's a lot of other, you know, day in and day out work that the city's other operational departments do, and so we're looking forward to working with them to coordinate on some of this. Building out sustainability website and our resources, partnering with other organizations that already do a lot of great work in the sustainability area. Want to look for what grant opportunities are out there and spend other people's money. And as, as, you know, we alluded to earlier, looking at possibly hiring a consultant to prepare a more detailed climate action plan. That would require a separate action by City Council before we start on that process. And then finally, we want to maybe take a look at GRAC's mission and purpose within the city code, updating some of that language in order to more meaningfully align them with the city's sustainability efforts moving forward. So that's our presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
I just have a couple things to point out that we're learning, for me, after meeting with, with Michael and Hannah and other planning members. You know, I think Mr. Holt put it best in the beginning, this, this truly is, a lot of the work that we'll do in this area is for generations behind us. It's important work, it's necessary work. Something that Hannah brought out to me was, we are going to have to revisit our GBL 2040 comp plan in five years from the time this passed, and we have a requirement to incorporate a resilience element, reading it right out of the ordinance here, into our next comp plan. So this will allow us to not be scrambling to pull that together. We know it's coming, we have to have a resilience element in our next comp plan update. Also, I have to believe that there is money available through state and federal grants, through the bipartisan infrastructure law, that I would like Greenville to get its fair share of in this area. And having the team dedicated to it and having this resolution under our belt helps us stand on stronger legs when we ask for it. So I appreciate council's support on this very much.
Quick comments. And Michael, you know what I will say. That, I mean, first of all, I, I don't, Camilla, I don't know how you record a fist pump, but I want to do a big fist pump for Hannah, and welcome to, to the new position, and I'm delighted we now have a sustainability person in the Planning Department. That's huge for us. And hence my point, 13 years ago, when GRAC was created, their sole purpose was to create a climate action plan. And so I would hope with the passage of this resolution, we'll put some new energy into that and actually get one done and make it a plan that is measurable and very specific. When I read the current plan that we're getting ready to vote on, it lacks some goals that we really need. I mean, for example, if you say increase the number of solar panels on community centers, if you say increase the number of electric buses, you can accomplish that goal by doing one. So we need to set some very specific goals that are aggressive and bold and, and meaningful, and I hope that's going to come through with climate action plan. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And you could probably get a better model for some of these.
It's great. I don't know about that picture.
Ready for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nice have. All right. That's it. Mr. Manager, got anything else you want?
Well, we've got a quick announcement on the Airport District Planning Study, and then a quick update on the Swamp Rabbit Trail.
Oh, okay.
Shannon, you want to give us an update?
Yes. Quickly, as council's aware, we've been working on the Airport District Planning Study, and it includes commercial, residential, and industrial areas around the airport and Convention Center that are located within Pleasantburg Drive, Lawrence Road, Haywood Road, and I-385. The consultant team has conducted two steering committee, steering committee meetings so far. We had one in January and one previously in December. The consultants were in town the week of January 16th and conducted stakeholder interviews with many business and property owners in the area, some of whom you all sent to us specifically, and were interviewed at council's request. Looking ahead, we expect to launch the project's website and public input survey by Friday of this week. So we wanted you to be aware to look me on the lookout of our new project's website and survey. This website and survey will be available at GreenvilleSC.gov/airport. So just go to GreenvilleSC.gov/airport. We encourage anyone who may be listening or is in the audience tonight that is interested to please go and check into this and please complete our survey. Our communications team will also promote the public input survey for us later this week, and then we will have future public engagement opportunities for everyone to participate in. We are planning some, a, our next open house for the public in early March, and as soon as we have the, we have the date finalized, but we're still trying to find the right location. So as soon as we have the location finalized, we'll be making an announcement on that for the public, but just wanted to give you all an update on that. I think we're looking at March night, so once we have everything finalized, we'll let you know. But we would like everyone to be involved and participate in this plan. Thank you.
Clint?
Yeah, so just a quick update on Swamp Rabbit Trail. Kalen's going to talk about a few of the projects he's managing, and then we'll talk about bridges here, too.
Getting close, y'all. So.
Which is going to get there first? A hair disconnector or this?
We're trotting. We've been fighting the rain, as you know. So this is an updated map, similar to what you saw the last time you saw me. The, the piece of, of thing that the, whoop, that the county, this is the, not the updated PowerPoint.
Again, you have another one?
Sorry about that.
While we're waiting, it was interesting, Councilor Dow and I were at a dinner with all the other municipalities in Greenville County, at which they all talked about the importance of trying to finally connect through Malden Fountain and Simpsonville up to this, eventually up to this trail. So that's a priority as you're trying to kill time.
It is, it remains, and we, we actually have a, a project that we're going to be coordinating with them on, a system-wide wayfinding network. So that's going to be coming up in a couple of months. We always have the larger plan outside of the city of Greenville in mind, because users typically don't care if they're in the city, the county, or the next city down. It's a, it's a.
And I even had the mayor of Greenwood, Brandon Smith, Mayor of Greenwood, saying, eventually they want to come all the way up and connect. That's a long way.
Clear has us in the sights from Fountain Inn. He's ready.
Yep. So got, got the updated point here. So paving has made a little bit of progress since the last time you saw me. About 41% of the, of the trail, approximately two miles, has been completed by the county. There's a section that runs from Holland Park, where Home Team Barbecue is, to where the brewery is escaping my brain, Think Tank Brewing is right now. That connection is complete and has been for a while. In addition to that, just past the Woodruff Road Bridge, all the way to Verde Boulevard, has been completed for about a month now. So about 41% is complete. The county plans to wait until the Haywood and Lawrence Road Bridges are 100% complete, and the crews are off-site before they commence the paving for the remainder sec, the remainder of the sections. The airport road crossing, the signals are up on wooden poles that will be replaced with mast arms. There's some supply chain issues for the mast arms themselves, but it will be functional when the paving is finished. The crosswalk is not yet installed, if you've been out there, but the paving, the repaving of the intersection itself is complete. And then there is an additional bridge that the county's going to be upfitting, just past the Verde Crossing. They also have some supply chain issues. Once those are remedied, then they'll be upfitting the remainder of that, and then they can pave that section as well. From the city projects, we have everything from Cleveland Park to I-Car. The Paperclip is probably the one hot on everybody's mind, because they've seen some dirt being slung around over there, but we are, we're tracking pretty good. We're shooting for middle of next, next month, probably, for a total completion. Happy to report that the stormwater system, the last stick of, of pipe actually went in today, and so final grading will be commencing very shortly on that. In addition to the Paperclip project, the adjacent Cleveland Park pedestrian bridge on the other side of Washington Street, crossing over to the Zoo Side, has entered the process of seeking FEMA approval for some floodplain changes due to bridge height and the approaches that will be required to cross the creek. And then.
Yes. So the, the bridges, we're essentially done with Haywood Road. There, there is a, a hand rail that still has to be installed, a little bit of paving that needs to be cleaned up, that's been performed for the connection up to the bridge from Haywood Road, and then just some general cleanup. But Haywood Road is very close to 100% complete. Lawrence Road lagging a little bit behind, still got some walls to pour there, as well as installing the, the hand rail as well. But right now, we're tracking with Lawrence Road to be done, looks like late March. I think we've had a total of 17 rain days in January, and it's just kind of, between that and concrete supply issues, it's just, makes a challenging schedule to, to maintain, but are making progress and excited about that. The at-grade crossing, which is, this is our temporary measure until we can figure out either the underpass or overpass, but this is in place and it's ready, ready to open as soon as the trail network is, is ready to connect to it. So commend Public Works for all their help on, on getting the sidewalk and ADA ramps done and, and working the median, our traffic engineering. This is just a, a complete in-house team effort. Traffic Engineering did a great job with the signalization, the pavement markings. Kalen's been managing this very closely and coordinating with everyone, so been a great project, and, and this is, this will be a great temporary measure to maintain the trail while we, while we study the at-grade, the, the separated crossing here. So we're about a couple of weeks away from our consultant having a feasibility report to us on analyzing both an underpass option or an overpass option. So we're very close on that. It, it does look like the overpass being a bridge along the, the rail alignment does appear to be a feasible option, been, been coordinating very closely with Duke Energy and their Transmission Group on right-of-way easement and a bridge structure being located in that, but very excited to kind of hear that news, and we'll, we'll come, come to y'all here in a couple of weeks with a report on what we recommend as next path forward on that.
Will that, Clint, will that feasibility report have any kind of estimate included?
Yes.
And then would that be taken into consideration? I guess this is a Karen question for the upcoming budget cycle. Yes? Okay, good, thanks.
While we're on that, notwithstanding that last slide about the above grade, and notwithstanding whether it has already been done, I just want, I want to be sure to say that I continue to receive expressions of concern about the at-grade crossing, and I understand and have to somewhat agree, from the direction where you're going towards Lawrence Road, with the Hollingsworth Park residences behind you and specifically near the manor, let's just be sure and certain we've done everything we can do from a sightline, visibility standpoint and a signage standpoint, because it sure does appear like people coming around that curve, they get to this at-grade.
Yep.
Whole spirit of all this is crossing over our roadway safely, but this is the one that still feels precarious to me.
We do have some advance warning signs that will begin flashing when the pedestrian crossing signal is activated to warn those car, cars that a signal changes ahead. We will check the sightlines. I'm sure there's some clearing we can do to open up that visibility as well.
Thank you.
That clearing has been done.
My, my concern about that day one has been, it's not, it's a road to nowhere. It doesn't go anywhere. So I think we're.
It's a road to see.
Really watch that. We're encouraging people to make a cross there, and I'm not sure it's a good idea.
Doesn't that get you to see I-Car, though?
It doesn't go, yeah, but there's nothing.
It's, it's one of the five pieces to bridge the gap. It's a pretty important.
It is, need to get the bridge there.
And then in addition to all of this, we do have a, a project that you'll be seeing advertised for some public meetings, probably in the next couple of weeks, you'll start hearing chatter about that with some maps, and we'll be holding a meeting probably early March to discuss neighborhood connections to Nickel Town, Gower, and Verde, in addition to some of the work that, that they're doing over there for the connection at large up to Legacy. And so feeling pretty good about those connections.
For my folks in Over, our folks in Overbrook, they're going to get up on Hillside, and is there, will be there, will there be an entry point for them, you know, Hillside Bridge over there?
Yes, sir.
Will there be a place where?
So it, yeah, and with, with the repaving that's actually getting ready to happen, Hillside is up for repaving, and so we're actually looking at a, a two-way protected cycle track on the south side of Hillside that would connect from Lounes Hill, across the bridge, and there'll be a connection, if you're familiar with where the construction access easement is for the bridge itself. So just past the Hilton Signs entrance, there's a, there's an opportunity to actually enter the trail from that, so that'll be a very direct connection for the Overbrook neighborhood.
Sidewalk going in on Lounes Hill, and then so kids and cyclists and walkers can use that sidewalk, and then we're going to have something dedicated over the bridge to access it right there.
That's right.
We heard, we heard a lot from the Overbrook community on just that particular section of Hillside, so really appreciate you drilling down and getting that repaved.
That's ours, Overbrook.
Yeah, our Overbrook.
And we've been waiting.
But I mean, that's, that's a, it's a very small section to get to the trail, but they are loud and clear, very eager for it, so safety and having that paved and restriped will, will really be a big boost to that community.
Top priority for us, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
We are ready. Thank you very much for that. And that's the end of the agenda. Okay, Councilman Gibson, I'm going to see you after the meeting. I could, one more minute.
Date, date Derek, if you could hang around. I failed, I failed it out. One of our members has, has just received a new diploma to hang on her wall. Dorothy, congratulations for the Municipal Association of South Carolina, advanced municipal elected official. We don't know what her class standing was in white, but we know she graduated honors.
I did my best.
Yes.
Said I, said I won.